Good evening and Happy New Year, Happy 2013. I hope you all had a wonderful holiday season. The meeting is now called to order. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? This is the first meeting of the new year and it appears to be a very, very light one at that. Maybe that's a sign of things to come, who knows? Madam Clerk, would you please do the roll call?
Councilmember Irwin?
Here.
Councilmember Price?
Here.
Councilmember Adam?
Here.
Mayor Protem Fox?
Here.
Mayor Bill De La Peña?
Present. We have no special presentations or announcements at this time. Are there any requests for continuance of any public hearing, which none of us tonight, or any agenda item? None, okay. Then, Madam Clerk, would you please open public comments?
This is the time and place for public comments. The speaker card is available for those wishing to address the City Council regarding items on the agenda or on a subject within the city's jurisdiction. All remarks should be addressed to the Council as a whole, and all documents for City Council and the official record should be presented to the City Clerk prior to speaking. Speakers are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. Under state law, public comment matters may not be considered by the Council unless listed on the agenda, but may be referred to the City Manager for administrative follow-up. Two people have presented cards in pursuit to Council standards. Speakers are allowed three minutes. The yellow light displays when you have one minute remaining.
Thank you very much. Our first speaker is Steve Gibbony, or Gibboni, followed by Mr. Nick Kidway.
Good evening. I have some forms here that I'd like to place on the board over there. I'd like to bring you all some news. Those of you at home and the few of you that are in the audience lightly directed at the City Council because a lot of them, you know, they hear things like this that are going on, but they kind of disregard it. First one is LA Times. China Plans to Halt Rain for the Olympics. It's a weather modification news article that was placed on the web that everybody could see. See, China did weather modification, but all those chemtrails we see flying in the sky, they're not real because you're told they're not by your mainstream media which has been bought and paid for. Another one. Banks Financing Mexican Gangs Admitted to Wells Fargo Deal. This was $376 billion that was laundered through Wachovia and Wells Fargo Bank during about 2010. They get a little slap on the wrist and everything's fine, it all goes away. This was in Bloomberg, by the way. Here's another one. Al Qaeda-Linked Group, Syrian Rebels Once Denied Now Key to Anti-Assad Victories. You see, we're running and directing Al Qaeda in Syria right now. McClatchy, DC, it's a big news organization. They tell you the story of how, you know, they were once, maybe it was like a theory that they were part of the group, but now they're key to an Assad victory. You see, we are told that under the NDAA that if we sponsor terrorism, we could be thrown in a black bag, into a van with a black bag over our head. That's part of the NDAA that was signed December 31st, 2011. Obama signed it and we all are under it. Yeah, there's no due process anymore. You can be thrown in a van, throw the black bag over your head. This is stuff that I think public in Thousand Oaks really needs to hear. And the sarcasm is intentional because it's angry. I'm angry that this stuff goes on without people knowing. Yeah, this is just a fun flyer. Get reeducated in the FEMA camps because we have here a February 2010, February 2010 Internment and Resettlement Operations Document. Yeah, that was, that's army.mil, you can all look it up. It talks about using PSYOP programs on the American citizens, how they're going to process you by social security numbers. You see, they don't put this out because they realize that most people are so stupid that they won't go look it up. These are arrogant globalists who are running the world and they want control over all the people in this planet and they are doing it unless we wake up. Last one, Fed Biz Ops. This is an order for 200 million rounds of hollow point ammunition, part of 1.6 billion that was ordered in the last 11 months. That's more than seven rounds per American citizen. You wonder what's going on? You wonder why they're arming to the teeth and then they, they, they send the police to visit somebody because they order a thousand boxes of 22 rifle ammunition?
Mr. Gibbony, can you please give us your, your name and city of residence?
Steve Gibbony, I live in Thousand Oaks.
Thank you very much. And next up, we have Mr. Nick Kidway.
I begin in the name of God, whose most beneficial, most merciful. My name is Nick Igbal Kidway. Last time I checked, still director of Concerned Citizens, Thousand Oaks, Honorable and distinguished Mayor Claudia Bill de La Peña, councilmembers. Glad to see that at least one person was concerned enough to come. I would love TO TV to show the Thousand Oaks icon with the headline of the freeway sign is not dead. It's unbelievable that everybody wants to talk to the newspapers, but they don't want to have it on, in a live hearing. I sent a email to the Council to agendize it so that, I mean, who are we scared of? I mean, part of the reason is that you do not want to talk about things because of the Brown Act and that the developer's rights might be violated, but despite having so many meetings under the last mayor, they were not fair. We still have not had video to show a moving sign, which this is, despite all the meetings. I presented a video and I sent you a link, I hope you watched it, that shows what one of these signs looked like. And the former mayor drove to Oxnard to look at that sign. If you go now, I mean, in one year, it's worse. I mean, it is dangerous. I mean, I want to look at it. I mean, people want to look at it and I can guarantee you, one, some family will be dead and then all these will go bad. The one, the video that I have for Duarte, I drove by again for work and unbelievable. There's two or three more signs there. It's a, it's a freeway alley and people were putting up signs and there was a traffic jam because people were looking at the signs that were being done. I would like you to address that, this mayor, how about changing to the good old rules because there's hardly anyone, you're allowed five minutes instead of three minutes. There should be a motion to allow people, when there's less than five people or something, to speak for five minutes. After all, this is American democracy. I'm showing the agenda for today. I want to speak on Agenda Item 11. I will turn this over to the Department of Finance. You have by law requirement to put on the agenda that, about the successor agency which will meet tomorrow at 3:00 PM. It's important business. The City Manager had a letter in his possession at the last meeting where the Department of Finance turned down 6.6 million. He said not a single word about this. Is this way to run a government, an American government? Please, I mean, what's the advantage of having new people coming up on the Council and just stare like statues and, I mean, I could be at home also and not get the wrath of the people that are on the other side on a special interest and are making money?
Thank you, Mr. Kidway. We have no more public speakers. We will now move to the consent calendar. Are there any questions, comments regarding the consent calendar? None? Before I ask for a vote, I will ask Mr. Nick Kidway back up to the podium for your speaker card to the consent item. Calendar?
Yeah.
Mr. Kidway, you're next again.
I cannot believe it, Mayor, that you would be butchering my name. It's Kid Why, like-
Did I say Kid Way? Um, it's Kid Why.
Not Kid Way. I mean, it's-
Kid Why, sorry.
Problem is that other people-
It's one language that I don't speak.
Listen to it and then they keep repeating the mistake. What is absent from, I mean, this is a skinny report. And what is absent is the minutes. I mean, what's happening? I mean, the, the last meeting was held December 11th. Why are there no draft minutes for it? The staff is having so much fun with the closure of the City Hall that there's no time to do the minutes? One council member was kind enough to address the issue of these un-American minutes that you have and staff gave a bureaucratic respond to the council member that we'll check other cities and all that, when you don't even have to check the other cities. The minutes of this city in the past and the other boards and commissions, some of them are still run the way they are supposed to be with comments. And this was at Turkey time. You know, Santa came and left, New Year's is over. When is that report going to come? Or is it put in a council comments or council mail? That's not the way to handle the public's or taxpayers' business. I just hope that the rest of the year also, the consent calendar will be clean and not be filled with all these things that don't belong in it, which are not routine. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you.
Excuse me. I think I still have, it's only a minute 38 second. TO TV, can you help me? It costs a lot of money to put these meetings together, especially for this city where we have such a big hall that needs to be heated up, these days has to be put up. TO TV, if you can help me, I had forgotten, that's why I pulled back. There is a very nice flyer there that shows that we had two council people that really had the interests of the taxpayers that had it. They don't want to show that? Oh, there it is, thank you. Stop wasting taxpayer dollars. Mr. Adam, you remember that. I mean, this is the kind of thing that needs to be stopped, is that you don't need to have meetings just for the sake of having meetings and getting staff over here. You need to conserve the limited resources that we have, all of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kidway. Mr. Mitnick will address a couple of the issues that you raised, one of which was the minutes. Did you want to address the Oversight Board now or later?
Like, you're talking about both. There is a, read it, a Thousand Oaks Successor Agency Oversight Board meeting tomorrow. I think there's one or two items on the agenda and you can go to the city's website to get more information about that. It is on there for the public to see and the public is more than welcome to attend any and all of the Oversight Board meetings. The issue about council minutes, as a reminder to council, it's scheduled at this point in time for a report back to council on February 5th. It's early next month, we'll have a report on that.
Thank you. We will now go back to the consent calendar. Is there a motion to approve? Mr. Adam moves. Please vote.
Motion carries 5-0.
Now, does the consent calendar, we now move to Committee Commission Board Report because we have no public hearings today. And we will hear from Mr. Ryan Bristol. Mr. Bristol is the Chair of the City Investment Review Committee and he will present us the annual report. Good evening and Happy New Year to you, Mr. Bristol.
Thank you. Same to you. Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council. I'm here to present the annual report on behalf of the Investment Review Committee. I prepared a few pages to go over what we're going to talk about tonight. It shouldn't take up too much time. Committee was established in 1997 and the residents, or the members need to be residents of Thousand Oaks. So, we've got five residents who are on the committee right now. I chair the committee. We've got Jim Bruno, Richard Law, John Short, and Cody Sorensen. So, the functions of the committee are pretty straightforward. We monitor the city's compliance with the investment policy statement. They've got an investment portfolio. The investment policy statement outlines how it should be invested and we just advise on how they're managing within the guidelines that they've been given. We meet on a quarterly basis and review the findings that are then reported to the City Council and then we prepare an annual summary and that's what we're going to deliver tonight. A few of the accomplishments that we've addressed over the last few years is reviewing the current debt of the city. We've made a number of changes to the investment policy statement. We've looked at different investment options and tried to bring other options to the table that could generate more yield because the portfolio is not generating as much yield as it was a few years ago with interest rates very low. We've looked at the benchmarks to make sure that the benchmarks are representative of the types of investments in the portfolio so the, the Council has a good gauge as to how the portfolio is performing. We've modified the quarter of the report and there's a committee resolution that's being brought and I think John's going to discuss that later and that's coming on the 22nd. The resolution is 97-10. Changes our meetings from January, April, I think before they were in July and October, to one month later so that there's enough time for the reports to come together. Eliminates the vice chair because of the infrequent need of the position and then just states the annual report needs to be presented to Council. So, my recommendation is to receive and file the report. I'd love to take any questions if you have a-
Thank you very much for this brief presentation.
Yeah.
I think it is helpful to give the public and the Council an oversight as to what the committee has done and what the goals are. Are there any questions for Mr. Bristol? Mrs. Irwin?
That's an active dialogue we have in every meeting. We have talked about different investments that could be used but aren't being utilized so they're within the investment policy statement guidelines of investments that they could utilize. And it's, it's an active dialogue in every meeting we have. Because with some investments, while we may want to get more yield out of the portfolio, it may mean taking more risk. And the bigger concern would be getting into investments that have a longer time horizon because when interest rates do start to rise, those are probably going to lose value. Even if you hold them till maturity, it's still on paper going to be a loss and that's something that we're trying to shield the portfolio from. So, it's, it's a very active dialogue, it's something we discuss in every meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Bristol.
I have a question.
Mr. Fox?
Just you raised a point that I think is worthy of discussion. You guys are looking at different options that are within our current investment policy guidelines. Has the committee looked at options that may be available outside the guidelines and bringing that to Council in order to accomplish a higher yield?
We do look at pretty much all the investments out there in the world within the guidelines of the current investment policy statement and without of the guidelines. And we have an active discussion on whether or not some investments should be considered. It's a, it's a good thought and in our next meeting, I'll bring that up to make sure that we're not leaving any stone unturned, make, make sure that all possible investments are considered for the portfolio. But it, I would definitely say to this point, it is something that we discuss almost every meeting.
Well, there is a difference between, we're doing everything we can within our current guidelines, but gee, we should, we would, we would be able to do so much better if we had a change in the guidelines. And I, I don't have them in front of me, obviously, but by nature, generally, public agencies have, you know, relatively conservative financial policy guidelines for obvious reasons. That being said, I think, you know, certainly we would entertain some recommendations with, you know, the staff analyzing it and making their recommendations. I just don't think the Council, I should say, I think the Council wants to encourage creativity on, with this committee. I look at the committee, you're all very well-respected experts in the field and we would rely, I think, a large part on your, your expertise and your recommendation. That's not an endorsement to get more aggressive, by the way. It's an endorsement simply to, don't feel boxed in and you certainly could make recommendations through staff back to the Council. By the way, Mr. Mitnick, that's probably a question for you or maybe even Mr. Adams. When was the last time we reviewed our policy guidelines and actually changed them?
Actually, we actually do it annually. And I, and I can talk a little bit regarding your questions to our Chair. You know, within the confines of what public entities can invest in, it's sort of governed by government code.
Right.
Which is very broad and actually our policy is a little more restrictive than government code.
Right.
And the policies required per the government code to be reviewed and adopted annually. And that's part of my presentation tonight. And going to Ryan, Mr. Bristol's comments, it is a constant dialogue. One, to look at new options, should we be adding them to the policy, should we not? And then within the policy, what is our investment strategy? There's certainly a difference between what our policy statement says and what our options are and then what the current investment strategy is. And that goes back to, there are options within the policy that we're not doing because that doesn't really follow our strategy at this point. But for both things, to invest within the policy and outside the policy but within the code, it's a constant dialogue. So, the policy is adopted and revised annually and I'll talk about that during my presentation as well.
All right, so two things. One is the spirit of certainly what I'm discussing, you're telling me, is already happening.
The committee, yes. We have five very diverse, very intelligent individuals within the field and all have amazing opinions and observations. So, staff, I think we enjoy the meetings just because we also learn something and I think they learn something from each other. So, there's a lot of dialogue specifically on where the market is and what, what a reasonable investment strategy for the city at this point is.
Okay. And then the second question is, I recognize we do review the financial policies and it's generally kind of a boilerplate process as we go through.
Correct.
When was the last time we actually changed them? Staff recommended a change.
Well, actually, there's, when we talk about general finance policies, general finance policies, whether it's budget, fund balance, is not that often. The investment policy is annually and there are changes annually. And what I consider substantial, I don't know if I would, but, you know, for instance, we, last year, we changed the way we did the benchmarking. This year, we're eliminating some discussions related to redevelopment, compliance, follow-up and stuff like that. So, there, you know, there's tweaks every year. How significant, it just, it depends on the year and the issue.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Any additional questions? Thank you very much, Mr. Bristol. I also remember we interviewed, I think, was it Mr. Bruno? Mr. Bruno. Mr. Price, was it you who was on the panel to interview the candidates for the City Investment Review Committee? I think so. We were quite impressed with the expertise of all the candidates and we chose certain ones because of the fresh, with, because of the fresh ideas he would be bringing to policy changes or potential policy changes. So, that is definitely something that we were hoping to achieve, bringing in fresh and new ideas. Did you want to add anything? Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good evening.
All right, this is receive and file. Do we need to vote on receive and file? No, we do not. All right. We move on to department reports, item number 10A, and that will be presented by Mr. John Adams, our Finance Director.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council. I'm going to make a, just a brief presentation. I think tonight, you received the report from the IRC. The Chair talked about sort of what they've been doing the last few years. As far as the city, what we're going to do tonight, we will be recommending for you to adopt a resolution confirming me as treasurer, which is done annually, and approving the updated investment policy. This is the annual delegation for me as treasurer to invest city funds. And this last delegation was made January of 2012. Just a brief overview on the portfolio. As we always say, we manage approximately $250 million a year. This number fluctuates. November, based on the receipts of property taxes, which we receive a large property tax payment in December and sales tax in January, which those numbers are in the 20 million range, our portfolio will, will fluctuate. November is usually a low month from the cash flow side because we have this large inflow of property tax receipts and other receipts. In general, the operating portfolio, which is funds from everything, from the general fund to the gas tax funds to the library, enterprise funds, water, wastewater, golf course theaters, this is all, those are those operating funds. 212 million as of November. We also managed some bond funds, just under 5 million, and then redevelopment. We do separate out redevelopment now. Redevelopment funds are based on the, the solution of redevelopment are in liquid accounts. We actually invest those money with LEAF, which is managed by the state treasurer. You can see the yield is low because it is liquid and day-to-day. The Chair briefly talked about the low interest environment in which we are. This just gives you sort of context to that. In November of 2007, you know, five-year treasury was yielding 3.38% and LEAF back then was doing almost 5%. We are now, a five-year treasury is at 62 basis points and LEAF is at 32. You can see the significant change. I, I think what's important for Council is that that does have a direct impact on interest earnings, revenues that support functions. Each fund has investments and are using those interest earnings to fund services within those funds. The general fund is a good example, that does have excess funds and those extra interest earnings do support programs. So, you can see the, the significant decline. Next slide. As far as investings, talked about, you know, we are restricted. I think I'll talk about sort of our primary goals, but based on that and based on the aspect of safety, we're really 80% into collateralized CDs, which are done with banks and collateralized, and then federal agencies, Fannie, Freddie, even treasuries. And then we have some investments in mutual bonds, LEAF. The city does manage about 30 million in liquid funds with LEAF and that's sort of our, the way we do operations. So, I talked briefly, mostly in agencies and collateralized CDs. It's about safety. At the end of the day, our, I'd say our three main principles are safety, 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 but actually, safety, liquidity, and then yield. That's really, you know, our last goal is, is, is yield. And as the Chair was talking about, we look at that and then look at the risks that in order to increase yield, what additional risk are we taking? Just briefly on the investment policy, first adopted in 1986 and it's done annually ever Talk about just policy. I think there was a question about how often do we look at the policy? Look at it annually, it's changed and revised annually. The process is, is that staff in the summer will look to ensure that it's in compliance with government code and what are the best practices. So, staff will make reviews and changes. It then goes to the Investment Review Committee in August. And the Investment Review Committee will see a draft of that report in August. They will make suggestions, they will ask questions, they will have their comments and recommendations. Then, staff will come back in November, which is the last meeting of the year, and they will ultimately approve the policy for adoption by the City Council. So, the process usually is staff in the summer, the IRC sees a draft, makes recommendations in August and then approves it in November. Substantial changes this year- Substantial changes this year, with the elimination of redevelopment. There's a lot of discussion about the redevelopment agency was a separate entity from the city, and so, there was some discussion on redevelopment. We've eliminated that. Continued compliance. The policy right now, as long as we buy an investment at the time of purchase that's within compliance of the policy, that's a legal, a legal investment and a legal purchase. If, for some reason, that investment falls with under, is falls outside of the guidelines of the policy, there is no clear way of reporting that to the council. And that was one of the things that IRC wants to ensure is, if we are taking, if we are buying different investments and it falls without, after we purchase it and we're holding it, if it falls outside of the policy, how do you report that to council? And so, that was one of the, one of the changes we made to ensure that it was clear how we report an investment that we purchased that we've had for a while, that now is outside of the policy. How do we ensure the council understands that's outside of the policy? Not that we have to sell it, but that we notify council that it's currently outside of the policy. And then, the last one was just investment pools and the way that we review those procedures. So, the summary tonight, you're just reappointing me as the City Treasurer, and you're adopting the revised investment policy. And then, staff's available for any, any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Adams. Are there any questions? Mr. Adam. A question for Mr. Adams.
Right, thank you. Hi, Mr. Adams. Of the three objectives, I would say we're certainly achieving safety and liquidity. I know that yield's a little disappointing, but that's the environment we're in right now.
Correct.
Chasing yield can always be, or can sometimes be problematic, but I think it would make sense, you know, for our fiduciary responsibility to look at some alternatives. Not saying we'd go that way, but just to at least look at them. That's a point. And then, then I do have a question. On the redevelopment funds, are these funds that we have in liquid in an account now that are ours to keep, or are these pre-confiscation? Are they to be confiscated?
You know something? It is a combination, oh, it's a combination of both, and those funds are only available to pay obligations that are approved, that are, that are recognized, approved obligations. And so, some of those funds are money that was from prior dissolution. We're going through a process to identify what is required to pay for obligations, and then what would be remitted to the County Audit Controller for remittance to the taxing entities. But in theory, going forward, we will always have some funds on hand to pay for RDA obligations, literally, I mean, for a decade or longer, until the redevelopment as a whole is completely, those obligations are completely paid. So, I can talk a little about the process, but the more or less of it is, is on a six-month period, we get money from the county to pay obligations from, for the redevelopment agency that we're supposed to be safeguarding, and then, you know, making payments, remitting for those obligations.
Some of that will be confiscated then?
Yes. Well, I shouldn't say, yes. Some of it will be remitted back to the County Audit Controller. The staff on a completely separate item will be going to the Oversight Board tomorrow, what we call our DDR, which is our Due Diligence Review, and the estimate at this point will be about $5 million.
All right. Thank you.
Any additional questions? None? I do have a question, and it deals with the, it also is mentioned in item 9A as well as 10A, which is your report, that the committee requested that the meetings be changed to allow for sufficient time for completion and review. The time schedule or timetable is the same. It was just moved up by a month, it seems. No, it moved, moved, it held in February. So, no, actually, it was moved down by a month, right?
Yeah, let me-
So, can you explain that?
Yeah, just quick clarification. In 1997, because that was when the resolution was establishing the IRC, and has not been modified since. And for practical reasons, we understand why it was the month after the quarter end. But practically, and even based on practice, as long as I've been here, and even longer, probably going back to the Bob Barry years, there was no way of ever getting the IRC agendas and getting the, the meeting scheduled prior, you know, during that first month. And so, the practice has been to meet in February, not January, even though that the resolution has said January. And so, we're just sort of saying, the past practice is really February. And from a timing aspect, it takes us between 20 and 25 days to close a month, do all bank reconciliations, do all investment reports, and prepare the report. Then, it takes us about a week in order to prepare the, you know, the agenda and get, and get the meeting set up. So, the first week is of, you know, it's usually done within 45 days. It's the first week of the following month. And that's just been the practice.
Okay. Thank you very much. We do have a public speaker card, and that would be Mr. Nick Kidway. And you have three minutes.
Nick Kidway, Assistant Northern Nevada Park Director, Concerned Citizens of Thousand Oaks, Honorable Mayor. First of all, I would like to say that something should be done about the sound system here for those of us who are a little bit hearing impaired. It's, there's no sound here hardly at all. There used to be a portable speaker. It has been taken away. I don't want to wear headphones. My main reason for speaking was, I guess I'll get it out of the way, is I think the city should, you have the fiduciary responsibility to spread the wealth and the authority, and it's not right to have the Treasurer also be the Finance Director. There's a potential conflict of interest, as well as, it's tempting too much. I remember when I first came in the country, and I was just appalled or amazed to see all the stuff that you could go and just put in your pocket or put it in your shopping cart. And things have changed, unfortunately. You can still pick up some things, but there's a lot of barriers to stealing. And I have utmost respect and admiration for Mr. Adams. But, policy should not be based on individuals, and at a minimum, you, somebody should make a motion to find out what other cities are doing, because I, maybe the others are doing it too. And as to what has happened in the financial industry, I mean, it's just common sense. I heard the report, so I want to talk about it. Redevelopment Agency, $28 million in funds. I mean, that seems to be too much slush fund laying around, so I am going to write to the DOF anyway, so I'm going to add that. And the, the gist of the legislation that was unanimously passed by the, is to dissolution of the two redevelopment agencies, and to give the money back to the state, and not in a bottomless hole, but to students, to counties for, so that it doesn't go to people like Caruso. And in fact, the yield for the city is 0.6%. 0.6%. And then, we still have the contract with this developer on the private side to guarantee 12.5%, and he's making 8%. I mean, that's highway robbery. And either you, you are in the driver's seat, either you should talk to him and ask him to reduce it, or say that you will ask the state to take it over. And we should really give it over to nonprofits and other, other agencies to take over, rather than having these expensive stores there that are bleeding the taxpayers. I also want to say, in closing, that it again brings the point that the driving force and that is the residents. It's not the sales tax, and it's not, certainly not the auto dealers. And that should really be championed from the, from, from the days, that it's that the overall sum, the liquid is, operating funds are $212 million, and the money coming from the tax, from the auto dealers is about $4 million. So, that really needs to be clarified. It's really bad to give that misinformation.
Thank you, Mr. Kidway. Mr. Adams, would you like to address some of the concerns that were brought up by the Speaker? Including the conflict of interest issue?
Well, the reason why I was putting up my fingers, I was going to acknowledge Jane Adelman, who is sitting next to me, who really, on a day-to-day basis, is doing our cash management, our treasury function. She's the city's Treasury and Debt Investment Analyst. And maybe this goes to Mr. Kidway's conflict of interest. The city's Finance Department is actually, I mean, we're a large agency. From an internal control side, Jane is just one part of our overall cash management and investment team. John, myself, I'm the Treasurer, actually makes those decisions as far as investments. Jane makes arrangements for those. We have a lot of people in, in the process as far as making these decisions. You know, as far as actually making wires, doing all the other investment side, John Adams is usually not doing that detailed work. I have accounts that are doing bank reconciliations. We have internal reviews by our external auditors. The city has an internal auditor. It's not, it's, it's common to have Finance Directors and Treasurers, the same person. It's also common to have Treasurers separately appointed outside of a Finance Director. I mean, if we came back to you, you would see a very broad, you know, you see different cities doing different things. Oxnard, I know, has a Treasurer. I know Camarillo, the Treasurer is the Finance Director. It just really depends on the city. I think that the past Finance Directors, and talking about my predecessors, Mr. Barry and Mrs. Hong, have done those two roles as well. You know, I think that for us, it really works well. So, I think those are my final comments. I don't know if there was anything else I need to answer, but I did want to recognize Jane for a lot of her work, and she's the one who manages the agendas, preparing the reports, and really working with the IRC as we meet with them on a quarterly basis.
Thank you, Mr. Adams. I think Mrs. Irwin has a question.
Yeah, actually, I don't have a question, but it's more a comment to the Speaker, and it's sort of reiterating what Mr. Adams said. We do have a lot of checks and balances in the Finance Department, including a Council Finance Committee, and we go over what the internal controls are. We also speak separately with an outside auditor that looks at our, our internal controls, and he definitely, the outside auditing firm definitely gives us top ratings, and they look at what a lot of different cities are doing. So, we have full confidence in our, our Finance Department with Mr. Adams leading it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other additional comments or questions? None? Would you like, would someone like to make a motion to adopt the resolution? Mrs. Irwin.
I'll move the staff recommendation.
Thank you. Please vote. Motion carries 5-0. Thank you. And now, the item 12, I'm sorry, 10B, which is the revised, potentially revised 2013 City Council Meeting Schedule. And the information is in the supplemental packet that was issued along with the Council Packet. Mrs. Lawrence.
Good evening, Mayor and Council Members. At the request of the Mayor, the 2013 City Council Meeting Schedule has been brought back to City Council for consideration of setting alternate dates for meetings. For background purposes, meetings are held at least twice each month, fixed annually by resolution, excluding the August recess. We have previously scheduled two meetings per month, including two meetings in July and two meetings in September. We also avoid scheduling back-to-back meetings whenever possible. When preparing a draft meeting schedule, staff targets the second and fourth Tuesday of the month, and then adjusts the dates after looking at holidays, school spring breaks, religious dates, conferences that council members may attend, and the August recess. The schedule for the following year is drafted by staff during late July or August and provided to the City Council for review and input. The resolution is brought forward in September for adoption. The current meeting schedule was adopted on September 11, 2012. Also, you may be aware in September last year that the Planning Commission revised its rules of procedure, and they now schedule their meetings the Monday night prior to a council meeting. This saves approximately $7,000 per year in setup and take-down costs for moving the council dais. Staff sets the City Council Meeting Schedule in the fall for the following calendar year, which allows determination of the Planning Commission's schedule, theater use, and for agenda item forecasting. The proposal before you tonight is to delete the meetings of July 9 and July 23, and replace it with meetings on July 2 and September 3. Additionally, staff is requesting adjustment of the meeting start time for the annual reorganization meeting. Historically, in the past, it's been set anywhere from 6:30 to 7:30, and for the past nine years, it's been set at 6:30. And since we brought this schedule forward, staff would like council to consider making the reorg time consistent with the regular meetings, which start at 6 o'clock. And staff is available for any questions you might have.
Thank you very much. I'm sorry, I was just conferring with the City Manager about the start time for the December meetings, the reorganization meetings from 6 to 6:30. I hadn't even seen that. So, I'm glad that you brought it up. Thank you very much for your presentation, and it appears that this is a document that is still living and breathing, and nothing is set in stone, because, and thanks to Council Member Irwin, I didn't really count the weeks in between the July and September meeting, and that would simply be too long of a summer break. Right now, we have a six-week summer break, and, I'm sorry, seven-week summer break, and that in itself is already plenty. So, I had hoped that in order to have a similar schedule with the school district, which begins the last week of August, I believe, and the school board actually meets the week before that already, the school district board, that perhaps the council could coincide with that particular schedule. But I believe, I believe it appears that it may, I may have run into some conflicts with some of the council members who have already made plans to be out of town. And so, what I was hoping for really originally is to move up the schedule by a week, perhaps two. And I'm not sure whether, where the council stands on meeting on August 27, when school begins, and knowing that the school board already meets the week before that, I always thought it would be better to have the meetings earlier on, rather than later in the year, because one of the main, my main piece really was meeting, having council meetings the week, one week before Christmas. So, I think that residents, I'm thinking from the feedback I've received, is that residents would be happier to have meetings earlier on and not so close to Christmas time. But anyhow, this is not etched in stone. This is something we will obviously change. So, I just wanted to get feedback from the, the council members as to how to proceed, now that I've mentioned what my own preferences are, and then, what their preferences would be. We cannot discuss this behind closed doors. This has to be done publicly. We cannot violate the Brown Act, so. Although, I did contact Mayor, I mean, Council Member Irwin. So, I think the proposal, if I may just start off the discussion, is then, still meet on July 9, and leave July 23 open as a backup meeting, rather than August 27, because I think that was a conflict from, for Council Member Irwin, correct?
My issue with the 27th is that I, it wasn't necessarily that it was a conflict, it's that I thought to go with a more traditional schedule and start after, after the traditional end of summer, which is after Labor Day. That's why I would prefer the first meeting be after Labor Day. It's, a lot of people leave town, a lot of people have their, they, they are planning on coming back after Labor Day. It is, it's also the day before school starts, the parents will be busy. If you have elementary school students, you're looking up student schedules at that point. So, I didn't necessarily think it's a, it was a good day for kids that are in school now, kids that are off to college, and staff people that might be planning summer vacations in August. So, that's why I would prefer to continue to start the meetings in September.
And one suggestion would be September 2nd, or 3rd perhaps, which would be right after Labor Day. That's one proposal. And then, and still leave, because of theater scheduling issues, which I was not aware of before, July 16 isn't even available for us to meet because this facility is already being rented. So, we could make July 9, and being that meetings tend to become lighter and lighter and lighter, and not run into 2 o'clock in the morning anymore as they used to, there may not be actually, as tonight, there may not be a reason to meet July 23, and as is tonight, perhaps we could have eliminated or canceled the meeting today and waited until the next council meeting. But is that an option that would be amenable to, to the council?
I think it's reasonable to just leave it scheduled for the 23rd, because if we need the meeting, then, then I assume the Planning Commission meets on the 22nd. If it's a light agenda, just cancel it. I, I would agree with that. I would agree with that.
And again, I am the only council member with really young kids. My schedule starts already in August, as does the entire Conejo Valley School District, as well as private schools. I will be here already mid-August, so I could be meeting early on. I would hate, as the mayor currently this year, to hate a meeting on July, I mean, to miss a meeting on July 23, because again, I, I don't know what vacation schedules the other ones have. I know we have at least two others who still have children in the school district, so I don't know. What other feedback do we have, Mr. Fox?
I just, I would tell you that first, while it's laudable, you want to make all the meetings. It is not the end of the world to miss a meeting due to a family vacation. It is certainly not the first time, and it won't be the last. So, and it's my understanding you, sometimes it's an extended deal. So I, one, I would not, I would not, from my standpoint, and I think I speak for the council, I don't think that, that should get in the way of your family plans, first of all. The second thing is the, the things that you already actually brought up, Madam Mayor, is the established schedule that we have. While it is a living document, I think from time to time, we get criticized for the length of the summer recess. That is a common occurrence in many communities, even in the city of Los Angeles, where they take August off. And I would agree, I think anything longer than that would just be bringing some undue criticism to the council. I'm glad Mrs. Lawrence pointed out the issue with the planning commission, so we would want to take that into consideration and not undo the setup for the planning commission by moving meetings around. And then finally, while it's not the end of the world, I actually, when I looked at the calendar, that was already on the internet, and already started to make arrangements for those Tuesdays, that I would be on duty at the fire station. So if there was a change, one day is not going to make a difference, but if there was a substantial change, it would cause me to re-
Well, we certainly don't want to do that.
Well, it's not the end of the world. Like I said, we all have our issues.
Yes, yes, yes.
So those would be my comments. I would prefer to keep it open, leave the 23rd meeting. Either we don't have it, or as again, if you happen to be out of town on vacation, I don't see that as a game breaker at all.
Okay, okay. All right. Any other comments, or Mr. Price?
Well, I would agree with council member Fox there. And I think the government doesn't stop during the month of August. And I think that doing anything to extend that break would be irresponsible of us, really.
Oh, no, we are not going to extend the break at all.
That was the proposal, was it not?
I know, but that was an oversight, and that was never the intent to have a nine-week break. So didn't get quite my ducks in a row, and so that's why I said that we're not doing it. I mean, I would not vote for a nine-week break.
Okay.
And-
Then I'm done.
No. That was way too much. And we are accessible, council members, during the summer, during the entire break, whether we are at the top of Machu Picchu or Mount Kilimanjaro. We have cell phones, and we are, we are quite, we are, you know, accessible via cellphone and whatnot. Yes. I mean, wherever we are in the world, we answer phone calls and emails in the middle of the night. So accessibility is really not an issue. It's just meeting and dealing with the residents' concerns. Okay, so perhaps this is something we can, now that schedule had already been established, something we can consider for the following year. But anyhow, then the recommendation would be to, and if there's anybody who would like to move it, is to keep the schedule as is, with July 23 being a backup meeting if needed.
I move that we adopt the established council calendar, already established, and hold July 23 as a scheduled meeting, and if we don't need it, we can cancel the meeting at that time.
Okay, very good. And if there are no further comments, so please vote.
Could I ask clarification regarding the reorganization time?
Oh, the times?
If you wanted to change that?
Yeah, I would include, I think that 6 o'clock makes sense.
That's makes, yeah, it makes sense.
Okay, so we would actually bring the resolution-
Would that make you happy?
Sure. We would bring that resolution back-
I know it jacks me up every two years.
At the next council meeting to change the time on that.
That's fine.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Now we're going to the next item, which is the, which is in the supplemental packet, and I misspoke earlier, the follow-up items, 12A. Oh, no, we have city council successor agency, we have none. Then we have the follow-up reports on meetings, which is none, 12A. We go to item 12B, which is council member assignments, and that report is in the supplemental packet. And you all had a chance to look at the assignments. I do want to disclose that I did speak to three council members for clarification only, not for any trading of committees or council assignments or anything like that. With the exception of council member Price, I did speak to other council members for clarification only. And I want to make, be on the record that I wasn't doing any trading or anything inappropriate or unethical. And it helped me to speak to the council members, and in the interest of maintaining harmony on the council, I really made very, very minor changes. There were a couple of committees in which I had quite an interest last year already, and primarily dealing with capital facilities and finance, and as well as the oversight committee, I was very interested in that. And I thought that one of the committees would also be a good opportunity for Mr. Adam to familiarize himself with city finances. But in the interest of harmony, I decided to just leave everything the way it is. And if there are no questions or comments regarding the assignments, we can go ahead and approve it. Are there any questions, comments? Everything is all right? Okay. Then I move that we approve the council assignments. Please vote.
The motion carries five zero.
That is that. City manager, do you have any updates regarding state budget or the RDA or anything like that?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, no follow-up from items talked about tonight by way of the forecast. For clarification for tomorrow, since the question was asked about the Thousand Oaks redevelopment successor agency oversight board meeting, that's at 3:00 PM, and it's in, I believe, the boardroom. Yes, the boardroom, and you can find information about that on the city's website. It's a light agenda, there's just one item, and it's an accounting issue following up on due diligence review of the funds from a previous or recent Department of Finance review. So that's available for those who want, the meeting's available for those who want to attend. Next city council meeting will be two weeks from tonight, on January 22. At this point in time, we have one public hearing, that's the proposed Grande Vista assisted living project on 3499 Grande Vista Drive in Newbury Park. Department reports at this time, looks like we have an update on the Thousand Oaks transit bus service. We're looking at Saturday bus service. And meta-housing development, that project looks like it's going to come back to council. That's all tentative at this point, and that's it by way of city manager comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mitnick. We don't have any closed sessions, and before the meeting is adjourned, I would like to turn the microphone over to Mayor Protem Andy Fox for the adjournment in memory of Mayor Emeritus Alex Fiore.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As councils are aware, every year in our first meeting of the year, we adjourn our meeting in memory of Mayor Emeritus Alex Fiore. Alex died in 2002. In the year of his passing, I asked the council that we would adjourn the first meeting of every year in honor of Alex, simply as a reminder to our community, especially those who may be new to the community that would be unaware of the tremendous accomplishment and input Alex had into our community. He served in the council for 30 years, which is a tenure now, thanks to term limits that will never be broken. He served five terms as mayor, but beyond his tenure, Alex really was responsible, along with other council members, for the community that we had. Tonight, we had a brief discussion on our financial security, our investments. Alex was a senior vice president in finance, and he is largely responsible for the city's early financial planning and the great shape that we're in today. His expertise was not just in finance. Alex was a very seasoned negotiator, Wildwood Mesa. He negotiated the acquisition of Wildwood Mesa. He authored the ordinance for many of our open space protections long before they were popular. I think finally, the thing that's most notable about Alex, and I think most enduring to all of us that knew him, was here's a guy that served in the city council for 30 years, the family man, Norma, and all his kids, Tom and Rick, Katie's wife. 30 years, very active household, but every Saturday, Alex put up a table at the Van Jan's mall. And he would answer literally any question you may have. I've been told that he actually did taxes for some folks. But this is a gentleman who is very committed to this community, very committed to public service. We are all indebted to the example that he gave all of us. And with that, it's my honor to ask for adjournment tonight in honor of Mayor Emeritus Alex Fiore.
Thank you very much, Mayor Protem Fox. The meeting is now adjourned until January 22. Have a good night.